Good evening, Councilmember Harvey.
Good evening, Vice Mayor.
How the heck you doing?
I'm doing pretty good. I got littles. I told them they had to be good.
Well, sometimes that works.
Hope so.
We shall see. Good news, this looks to be a short, relatively short meeting, perhaps.
I hope so.
And I think a short time's helpful in that situation.
Yes, especially when it becomes bedtime.
Oh, yeah. I don't know where yours are at, but I know my oldest grandson bedtime. Sometimes it goes smoothly, other times there's noise and happen.
These guys are pretty good.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah.
So now are you currently Chair of the Waste Management Board?
Um, Cloverdale is Chair. Um, and we're gonna have to have a discussion next meeting because we kind of jumped over Windsor because of all that was going on up there.
Yes, but you were then it was the year before you were Chair, right?
I haven't been Chair on the Waste Management Agency for a while because remember there's ten of us.
Yeah, yeah, I remember you had, I remember you've been, I know you've been involved with that for years.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
Reading the packet, how complex is this for one community? And then they try to figure it out for multiple communities in a way that everyone could agree to? Yeah, good times.
Yeah, and I think the state still doesn't have its total act together.
Shocked, I'm shocked.
Yeah.
To be fair, they've had a few things keeping them busy.
Exactly.
I guess we all have.
I guess it's hard to keep all the balls up in the air.
Yes, indeed. That's about that time. I think I shall go to mute.
Hey, Ben, how's City Hall doing down there?
Nice and bright, middle of the day down here.
Wow.
That's kind of a microclimate thing, isn't it, I guess?
Apparently.
It's always sunny in Kattati.
Managed to tilt the world the other direction over by City Hall.
That's right.
Good evening all, and it looks like we're at six o'clock. Looks like we've got everyone here. Um, welcome to the joint meeting of the Kattati City Council and the Successor Agency to the Full Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency for Tuesday, November twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, Ms. Burgess, would you kindly give us a roll call, please?
Councilmember Harvey?
Here.
Councilmember Sparks?
Here.
Councilmember Ford?
Here.
Vice Mayor Landman?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here, thank you very much. Um, before we move on to the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd like to offer a moment of silence for that horrific incident in Wisconsin over the weekend. Take my indulgence. Thank you all very much, and now we'll move on to our Pledge of Allegiance if you would all kindly join me. I pledge allegiance
Pledge allegiance
to the flag
to the flag
of the United States of America
of the United States of America
and to the Republic
to the Republic
for which stands
for which stands
one nation
one nation
under God
under God
indivisible
indivisible
with liberty
with liberty and justice and justice for all.
Thank you. Um, if there are no discussions, I would look for a motion on the approval of the minutes and notice of waiving for the meeting, uh, regular City Council meeting of November ninth, twenty-twenty-one.
So moved?
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion in a second. Uh, we could have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Landman?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes, thank you very much, and now we'll move on to announcements. Um, meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and adopted City Council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items where the City Council will consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. Meeting agenda also includes a citizen's business item, which is designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The City Council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the City Council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any of the statements that the City Council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposefully biased. Measure S supports police services, a variety of recreation programs for all ages, and the maintenance of our streets, parks, and public buildings. See details on the web at kattatycity.org. Citizens interested in receiving City Kattati Community Alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up with Nixle by downloading the mobile app in the iOS or Android App Store or by texting your zip code to eight-eight-eight-seven-seven-seven. Like always, we'd love to hear from you, so please feel free to contact the city at seven oh seven seven nine two forty-six hundred or info@kattatycity.org. If you have an on emergency issue after normal business hours, you can contact us at seven oh seven seven nine two four-six-one-one. And of course, if you have an emergency, please contact nine-one-one. Continue to look for updates on the city's website and social media channels available on Facebook, Instagram, Nixle, and Nextdoor. And now we look for approval of the final agenda. Any changes to that, Mr. Obed?
Thank you, Mayor, no proposed changes.
Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to citizens' business and public comment for consent calendar items. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy twenty-twenty-one oh one, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person. Matters not on the agenda add a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend time limit for a reasonable time where disability accommodation has been requested. Now we'll open it up for, uh, citizens' business, Ms. Burgess.
Thank you, Mayor Moore, and currently we have no attendees. That will end public comment.
Thank you, and now we will move on to the consent calendar. If there are, if there's no discussion or no items to be pulled, I would certainly entertain a motion.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion in a second. Ms. Burgess, roll call, please.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Landman?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes, thank you very much. Now we'll move on to, um, direction of future agenda items. Uh, Councilmember Harvey?
Uh, yes, it's, uh, interesting that we have our next regular agenda item on, um, SB thirteen eighty-three. At the Waste Management Agency meeting the other day, we had a great presentation from a group of students, um, about what SB thirteen eighty-three means to the public. Um, they were very engaged. It was a great presentation, so I would, um, like to, and they're willing to go to all the city councils and to tweak it as necessary, um, for the individual cities. Um, but I think it would be well worth the public, um, and our direction for us to have that. And I will also be bringing this to, um, our education group. Um, because I think it will be worthwhile to get this out, um, in the schools too, so. But they did a wonderful job, so I would like us to have that presentation.
By their students?
Mm-hmm.
Terrific.
Yeah, and they're willing to, um, which is why I want to bring it to the education group to kind of train, if you will, other presenters from the local school district. So that also gets new people on board and kind of make, helps them understand and, and understand for their own community. So I think that that's really great that they're willing to do that and, and, uh, bring others on. So I will get that information to Damian, um, with the teacher that, um, is kind of gardening them. Kind of helping them through all of this.
Thank you. As they say, education is key. I think that's great. Okay. Looks like that's it on any future agenda items for now. Then we'll move on to our regular agenda item. Approval of SB thirteen eighty-three MOU with Zero Waste Sonoma and review of the draft SB thirteen eighty-three ordinance. And you're gonna start us off, Mr. Obed?
Yes, uh, yeah, thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, good evening. So, um, on the topic of solid waste, SB thirteen eighty-three is, um, is a law that was, uh, signed by the governor back in twenty sixteen. And it's, um, broadly, its broad intent was to, um, reduce short-lived climate pollutants as part of a suite of measures the state passed to address greenhouse gas emissions and global warming. Um, specifically as it relates to, you know, what we're talking about tonight is, um, landfills and specifically organic wastes, um, going into landfills, which decompose and cause methane emissions, which is a very potent greenhouse gas. So, um, SB thirteen eighty-three really was targeting organic materials and trying to divert it from the landfill and, um, ideally into, into, uh, reuse as like compost or mulch or, um, or even better yet, if you can get it, um, further upstream, um, reusing the actual food before it ends up as, um, garbage in a green waste bin. So, um, there is, I, I just, before I get into the rest of the presentation, I'll just point out, um, I think everyone here on this meeting knows, but um, attached to the staff report is the MOU with Zero Waste Sonoma. And, um, this is a ten-party MOU, so in other words, it's all nine cities plus the county of Sonoma are signatories to it. Also, um, there is a, uh, draft of, um, an ordinance that we're eventually gonna have to, um, pass, well, actually in the near future have to pass to, um, basically add the regulation in the teeth to, um, implementing SB thirteen eighty-three in Kattati. And then lastly, in the package, there's a, um, presentation, I just include that as background. Presentation is from Zero Waste Sonoma, but it gives more background on thirteen eighty-three, um, in case maybe I missed something in my staff report that may have been of interest. So, um, so what, what we're looking, I mean, basically SB thirteen eighty-three originally was going to go into effect January one, twenty-twenty-two, at least the, um, the green waste diversion. It did get postponed a little bit, um, not by a lot, but, um, uh, as I understand it, we have until April one to actually implement. That's when CalRecycle, which is the state agency that oversees solid waste management in California, will be, um, will be, uh, starting to check and then, um, we should be well ahead of that timeframe. Anyway, the, the parts, so SB thirteen eighty-three is a fairly, um, fairly, fairly complicated in some, in some ways because of just the way solid waste is managed, um, in California typically. So we have, um, in Sonoma County, we have Zero Waste Sonoma, which is the Sonoma County Waste Management, um, Agency, which is basically a collaborative of all the, it's a joint powers authority, but it's a collaborative of all the cities in the county to, um, to jointly manage, um, edgy, a lot of things solid waste, primarily planning, education, uh, reporting to CalRecycle, you know, joint reporting. Um, because thirteen eighty-three isn't the only thing, obviously, that we need to report to the state. There's a lot of other, um, pieces of legislation prior to this that require us to collect data and report, so, um, so Zero Waste Sonoma is, that's, that's what their, um, that's what their mission is, that's what they're very good at. Also, most cities in, in the state, and, and Kattati's no different, we use a franchised waste hauler, so it's a private company, Recology in our case, that, um, that we have a franchise agreement with that actually collects, um, collects the waste and is really the first sort of, uh, point of contact for customers. And, um, and then, of course, we have, um, the city as sort of the third piece in this, um, you know, third, kind of the third player in this, um, in sort of implementing this legislation, but third player in solid waste in Sonoma County, um, at least directly with our customers, I should say. So, um, uh, what's before you tonight is the, is the MOU with Zero Waste Sonoma, and that focuses very much on, um, developing educational materials, um, being the kind of second point of contact for customers that are non-compliant. If, uh, there's follow-up that Recology needs to, they're not getting, a customer's refusing to participate or they're throwing garbage in their green waste bins or whatever the issue might be, um, Zero Waste Sonoma would be the second kind of point of contact for any of our customers. And, um, and also, um, Zero Waste Sonoma is looking to jointly procure compost on behalf of all the cities in the county as one of the SB thirteen eighty-three requirements. So, um, so that's in broad strokes, that's what the, um, that's what the MOU covers. Um, separately, we also have the franchise agreement, as I mentioned, that's gonna need to be amended, and we're currently working with Recology on that amendment right now. Um, because obviously they're the ones that are the initial point of contact for their customers. They're the ones that are gonna have to be making sure the bins are compliant with the three-color system and they're labeled properly and, um, and they also need to do the load checking and, and some of the direct, um, customer contact if, uh, just information generally, but also follow-up if they're non-compliant for some reason. And, uh, so anyway, all that will be outlined in amendment to our franchise agreement, which is in the works, and I expect it to be ready in the very near future. And then, um, and then lastly, as I touched on earlier, we have to, um, adopt an ordinance that codifies the requirements in thirteen eighty-three, um, and also, um, adds, um, an enforcement ability too, because if, um, Recology can't get compliance and then Zero Waste Sonoma comes in with a customer and can't get compliance, then at the end of the day, if you have, um, someone that just refuses to, um, to, um, you know, get with the program, so to speak, or they're just, you know, egregious violators, then at the end of the day, it's gonna be the city's code enforcement function that's gonna have to issue citations. And then, um, the other part that the city is going to be, i- is working on is, um, an environmentally preferred purchasing program, and this is largely about, um, post-consumer, uh, waste content papers and, um, and, um, and trying to meet some of the, the EPP tries to meet some of the mulch or the digester gas, you know, um, reuse goals, and so, um, we're also working on a, Zero Waste Sonoma also produced a model of that that we're working through right now too, and, um, should be coming back with that shortly as well. So I, uh, would expect in the very near future, we're gonna have the ordinance and the, um, environmentally preferred purchasing policy, um, back before the council to, um, review in more detail and, um, potentially adopt or introduce in the case of the ordinance. And then, um, the last piece is the franchise agreement, which, um, may be lagging slightly behind the ordinance, but, um, probably not by a lot. Um, anyway, I expect it all to be kind of wrapping up here, um, December and then into January, but by that time we'll probably be complete. So, um, that's the, that's the broad kind of strokes and the overview of it, but, um, I would be happy to answer any questions anybody has about it. And also I would say to, um, any feedback, the MOU is, like I said, already a ten-party thing, so there's really not a lot that we can do with that. It kind of is what it is, but, um, if you have any comments on the ordinance, feel free to ask or provide them, and I can, um, make sure that I at least get answers or, um, potentially work it into changes to the ordinance before it comes back for introduction. So with that, I really am done. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Obed. Uh, Vice Mayor Landman?
Yeah, just a couple of quick questions. Um, on page ten, it lists a number of bullet points that are requirements that, uh, Zero Waste Sonoma will be, uh, required to do, and the second bullet is to monitor residents and businesses' compliance with organic diversion and food recovery donation requirements. And I'm curious, is this, is there a process outlined whereby they will do this? Is this more a general requirement? Um, it just strikes me as a difficult thing to accomplish, and I'm wondering how they intend to do this. It just strikes me as a difficult thing to accomplish, and I'm wondering how they intend to do this, if we know at this point.
So with my understanding, that a lot of this stuff has to be reported in some form to the state ultimately. And so there is record-keeping requirements for the city. The city has to collect data and keep records and then provide them the zero waste, and so does Recology.
Yeah, and I could certainly see that for the city and even some of our larger businesses perhaps, but when it mentions monitoring residents' compliance, that's that was where I was kind of scratching my head how we really effectively do that, even with camera-based systems. I'm not sure how effective that would be, but I, I was just curious if they actually had worked that completely through yet.
Yeah, I'll just say, and then maybe Councilmember Harvey might have some more to add to this, but as part of the franchise amendment that we're doing, there, there is a requirement in this law that the, that the hauler does some compliance monitoring of commercial and residential accounts. And so what that means in practice is there'll be some amount of accounts where they're going to be flipping the lids and looking into the contents of the can.
Spot checking?
Spot checking, yeah, yeah.
That makes, makes sense, and you can probably, if you do that randomly enough, you can extrapolate from that. That's good. And just a general question, I wonder if you could just illuminate me a little more on this whole concept of the required buyback for compost and mulching products, because I wasn't completely clear in that. It seems in the process that the county, the cities will be investing some, and ultimately the public somewhat significantly in the process of doing all these things, collecting these organic materials, having them processed, which I think is a good thing, and I fully support it. It's a necessary thing. But then seeing that, if I'm reading this right, between the lines, we'll then also be paying larger farmers, vintners, vineyards extra to buy this, what I infer at least would be probably below-cost prices or something. How does this work out as a good thing? I, I can't believe there is why, as long as we create the mulch compost and it's used somewhere appropriate, I mean, anywhere you put it into the ground, it's doing a valuable thing. I'm not sure why we're required to have to sell it if there's not a market for it.
You know, as I understand it, CalRecycle, the perspective they had, or, you know, maybe even the legislators had, was that there's, so this doesn't, it's, it's, it's maybe hard to understand in the Sonoma County context, but you know, perhaps there's other counties in the state where they don't really do any composting or any mulch, you know, creation. And so so they're trying, I, I think, as I understand it, the state was basically trying to create a market in all the different counties for these materials. And and if they basically require, because as you start diverting more green waste, you're going to create this compost that needs to go somewhere.
Yep.
And, and they're, I guess the thought process was is that if they make the cities buy back a certain amount of it, it's going to, kind of create at least a basic market for that material in whatever county this is happening in. And I will say, so that was an issue, it's kind of an issue in Sonoma County, because we already have a pretty, we don't have a local compost operation anymore, but we do have a pretty good market for people buying compost and mulch.
And I remember when we had one, it was very well accepted and did well. I think generally it's good to give a little push to try and make sure that happens in other places.
Yeah.
And I, and I'm sure this will probably work out right, once it gets through the startup phase of a few years, but I just have some concerns that there's kind of some payout going here that perhaps doesn't strike me as a hundred percent appropriate, but
I, I will
This is the price we pay to get this started and get going. We'll see where it goes. I'm sure we can work with this in the next few years, and perhaps we'll find a way to adjust it. Perhaps there'll be enough uptake in this county, it won't even be a huge drain on the public. So I certainly hope not.
Yeah, and I, I will say too, that the, the table in the staff report was zero, was a zero waste, so Zero Waste Sonoma calculated based on everyone's population. This is, you know, kind of the amount of compost that you'd have to buy each year. But, you know, because Sonoma County already has a pretty healthy market for this, what Zero Waste Sonoma ended up, it sounds like what they arrived at, and, and again, I think Councilmember Harvey can illuminate this more, but what they arrived at was, you know, rather than us all buying the, I think it was like one point four million dollars or so worth of compost, we could spend, you know, collectively a hundred and fifty thousand and basically give users, ag users, like a ten percent discount on it. And then, you know, in exchange for them agreeing to allow that to be used as credit for us for reporting to CalRecycle.
Still seems like a big giveaway to me, but I like a hundred and fifty K better than when we're talking over a million. So you have me sold there. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember Sparks.
I can, I can defer if, if Councilmember Harvey would like to address any of that. I can go after her.
I'd be happy to jump in there. So on the residents and commercial, there are going to be audits, and they actually will be looking at routes, and they will be doing like floor dumps, if you will, of whole routes to, to check things. So not only will they be periodically looking in individual cans, but they will also be, you know, looking at specific routes, and they have to do these audits on a periodic basis, apparently. So that, that is where they will look for some of that compliance. On the mulch, Damian is correct that it's a hundred and fifty thousand, ten percent for, for the big, for the big like vineyards and things like that to, to buy back. Basically, it came down to a what's in it for us type thing. So for us, for them to be able to report that information so that we get credit for it, they, they wanted something in return for that. We really in Sonoma County don't have a, a big problem with getting rid of compost. It's really more of a Southern California problem, because nobody buys compost apparently in Southern California. And our places actually have a hard time getting compost. And in fact, that the suppliers that we do have oftentimes run out. So it is a commodity that is widely used. And to Damian's point by city, I, I asked in our meeting, could it be shared across the county, you know, so let's say a lot of the agriculture is in the county, in the in the county areas, do we get credit for that? And they said, no, each jurisdiction is, with the way the law is written, we are responsible to purchase a certain amount. So I was hoping that collectively, we could purchase, you know, the amount for Sonoma County, but apparently it is, at least at this point, at a jurisdiction level. So hopefully that helps, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Sparks.
Thank you. I have some questions based on what we just heard from Councilmember Harvey, because it, I thought that in the MOU, it had this description of you know, crediting out the purchase on a proportional basis to all the cities. So are you, are you saying that that's not how it's going to work anymore? Just confused.
The city, the city portion has to do with how much compost each city has to have. The crediting thing has to do with, with big purchasers, like I believe, off the top of my head, I want to say ten cubic yards. They didn't want to get into smaller amounts, so some of the bigger like vineyards and farmers and things like that, they use lots of it, that they would get like a ten percent rebate in order for them to keep track of it and give us the proper paperwork that we would need to get credit for that. So that's kind of where that credit stuff comes in, has to do with big purchasers purchasing that stuff so that we can count those numbers in our reporting.
Are you saying that those big purchasers would have to be in Katati in order for it to count for us?
For us, yeah. And I don't really know that we really, really have that. That's why I was saying that I was hopeful that it would be regional, that we could, you know, go regionally with it, but apparently that isn't the way it works.
MOU wording is, seems really misleading, because I did not take that from it at all. That's good to know. Thank you. I have some other questions, Damian. Just, they're all about the ordinance and just clarifications for me. For, for packet page, unpack at page fifty-four, it talks about multifamily being excluded from green, multifamily residential's developments being excluded from the green container requirements. I was wondering if you knew why that is.
It's for the not required to comply with container placement requirements or labeling requirements? Is that what the question?
It seems like they're not required to even have green waste bins, was the way it seemed to read to me.
Yeah, um, well, multifamily is required, as I understand it, to have green waste. So I'm not, I'd have to look into that and let you know exactly what that means.
Okay. And then other question I had was for the food recovery program on packets page fifty-seven to fifty-nine. I just wondered if there was any specific requirement for how much food needs to be recaptured or recovered. It seemed sort of vague that, that it was just, oh, we have to have a food recovery program and we have to document how much what we do, but there didn't seem to be any like specific requirements for percentages or things like that. And I'm wondering if, is there some specific requirement that lives in a different part of the law, or is it really just as open-ended as, as this seems?
Yeah, I'm not aware of a specific target number. I mean, I do know that that's obviously, as you read in the ordinance, the law does require that we identify those generators, those, you know, that have potentially edible food and start working with them to divert it. I, I don't know. I mean, if my understanding is correct, then it could just be a case of the state really not knowing how much is out there and just trying to get some real data back from the counties. And then maybe some subsequent legislation potentially.
Okay.
Mayor, I just, I, I had asked about the exact same question previously to one of, one of my clients, it's a, a regional agency, and I was told that they had talked to CalRecycle about this particular topic. And, and CalRecycle's perspective is that by, by creating these requirements, it's going to create the demand for this material to be reused. And so all they're expecting from the cities is to, is to set these programs up and then it should work on its own. But at some point, I wouldn't be surprised if they, they didn't adopt the target if it doesn't work as they anticipate.
Thank you. I had another question. Oh, sorry.
I just said thank you, John. Go ahead, Laura.
There was, back at page sixty-three, it talks about in the ordinance, a requirement that the city shall receive written complaints. But this was in the MOU, this is going to be handled by Zero Waste Sonoma, and they're going to be, as I'm understanding it, setting up some kind of web form that we can then put a link to. So I'm just wondering kind of nuts and bolts, how will we, will they be routing complaints back to the city? Or does just the fact that the complaints are going somewhere, like maybe not straight to us, but just going somewhere, does that meet the requirements of this ordinance? I was just sort of curious exactly how that would work. I can imagine residents making complaints and then wondering where they went, or does the city even get those complaints?
Yeah, well, in terms of like overall process, anything that anything that happens, whether it's Recology that becomes aware of it, or Zero Waste Sonoma becomes aware of it, or we become aware of it first, the, the plan that we've talked about jointly at least, is that we would be working together kind of off the same information so that we would be sharing this stuff. So that we're all aware of where people are in terms of their compliance or non-compliance. As it moves through the steps, you know, as it moves through Recology doing the initial outreach and trying to correct whatever the issue is, and then if that doesn't work, moving it up to Zero Waste Sonoma, or, yeah, Zero Waste Sonoma, and then ultimately, if that doesn't work, then moving it to the city, but it, it's only when it got to us at the end that we would actually be issuing citations, but we should have, we should all be together on these. And that's, that was what we had talked about as we were developing these things. Is that we would all be communicating and working through these as we, as the people progressed, or hopefully didn't progress through that and got into compliance.
And then my last question was just back to the same topic about the procurement targets for these, for the mulch and, and compost. It, well, I think my whole question is moot now, because I misunderstood. I thought, I thought we were going to be getting credit for some portion of this county-wide purchasing that Zero Waste Sonoma was, was managing, and then it looked as though we might still have more that we needed to make up. So I'm just, but now it seems like we have to do all of it. So my question is, do we have a plan, or what, what are we going to do? I, I had originally thought I might propose that it would be great if we could have residents, if we have to purchase some amount of compost for residents and businesses in Katati to be able to buy some of that possibly at a discounted rate or distribute it. I'm just wondering how, if, if we really aren't getting credit for this countywide sales that the, that, that Zero Waste is doing, then how are we going to, you know, all of that?
Yeah, all, I, I will circle back with Zero Waste, just to make sure I fully understand it too, because I, I seems like I had a slight misunderstanding there as well. But the other things we had talked about is the city's, you know, directly purchasing this for their own, you know, municipal landscape needs. Also, you know, having like mulch days for residents, where they, you know, where it's just basically deposited in a giant pile somewhere and people can come get it. So things like that are other, other alternatives that had been talked about before, but I, I can't say that, you know, I, I don't have anything solid yet at this point, but I'll get that clarified, and then we'll, we'll do one or the other, or maybe both.
I think mulch day would be great. All right. Thank you so much.
Yep.
Thank you. Ben, I know you had your hand up. Councilmember Harvey, did you want to answer a question, or can I bring?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to circle back on a couple of Laura's question. I mean, this whole food recovery thing is really so, so new, and the Zero Waste Sonoma staff has really been, you know, trying to work really hard with CalRecycle, as Mr. Barker had pointed out. It's so new that they really don't know what to expect. They think that the behavior will change. And they're trying to do, you know, a carrot rather than, than a stick, but Zero Waste Sonoma is working really hard to even identify what our possibilities are to meet that, so that we can, as was pointed out earlier, keep this stuff from even getting into the green bins if we can, you know, really utilize it as food. And on your other question about the mulch, Damian, I can't remember exactly how much, but didn't we annually always get mulch for the city? And how different is the amount that we're being asked to commit to different than what we used to get?
If, if we had to buy it at the, the estimated values, it was saying about twenty-five thousand dollars of mulch a year. I mean, we annually, we buy more in the five to ten thousand dollar range.
So our bitment is a little bit more with this program?
Yeah.
Okay. So I know that that doesn't answer all your questions, Laura, but this is all
It's really helpful. Thank you.
It's really so new and, you know, kind of the, all of this whole ordinance is, it's sort of like the blind leading the blind, you know, it's like, and you ask for help on these things and that the ordinance itself, or the bill itself was not written, you know, fully fleshed, so it's like putting meat on the bones that were handed to us. So just know that Sonoma County is really ahead of the game. We are much farther ahead at looking at these things and addressing these things than many of the other counties. And some of the other counties have actually reached out to Zero Waste Sonoma and asked them And some of the other counties have actually reached out to Zero Waste Sonoma and asked them what they're, what they're doing. So we're in a good place. It doesn't feel like it, but we are.
I, you know, I will add to real quick that, you know, if we do, let's say we normally would buy five to ten thousand dollars worth of mulch, obviously. You know, we probably could buy twenty five thousand dollars in a given year, but then you can't probably do that year in, year in and year out. Because pretty soon, you know, rather than three to six inches of mulch on the ground, you're going to start having a foot of mulch or what, you know, at some point, you're just going to run out of places to put it. And so in that sort of context, it would make sense that you also would would have some resident component as well, you know, where you're like, you know, mulch day or that sort of thing to help meet those targets if if that's what we're going for.
Thank you. Councilmember Ford.
Thanks. Two, two items. First, on the, on the ordinance. I I agree with Councilmember Sparks that the requirements of multifamily need to be clarified in there. I suggest that they be sort of just explicitly excluded from the entire commercial subsection and a new section added about multifamily requirements. I think it's crucial that managers of multifamily do are required to provide the bins for their residents to properly separate. So and there might be some, I imagine multifamily is somehow excluded from the state law, which is why they're written out of the ordinance somehow, but it's, it is confusing right now. And right now, as you read it, it really sounds like multifamily don't have to pay attention to this. And I think we need to make it clear that there's a lot of history of multifamily managers not bothering to provide recycling receptacles, for instance, and the same thing's going to happen with this if we don't make it really clear that they need to provide ways for their residents to get with the program, as we put it. On the procurement issue, when you do cycle back with Zero Waste Sonoma, Damian, the the MOU, I understand that's not changeable by us because it's a ten party agreement, but the entire plan to provide a rebate and and credit, you know, purchasers to provide sort of sign the credit for the purchase over to the to Zero Waste, which would then assign it to us, isn't in the MOU anywhere. All it says in the MOU is the agency shall use or give away organic waste products procured as they deem appropriate. So somehow that entire process that's spelled out in the staff report isn't in the MOU, and I'm just wondering, or maybe I missed it. But it's not in the procurement section. So if that could be just I want to know how that's working out. So maybe you could tell us at some point. And it does seem in.
Mr. Mayor, I I would point out there's a, I I did see it in the procurement section. There is a provision, I think it's in it's on page four, the MOU, I M B, little Romanet two. I guess the, maybe it's the second sentence. Well, I guess the first sentence of that Romanet two.
What's the packet page on that, John?
Packet page twenty five. Indicates that the agency shall further use reasonable efforts to procure recovered organic waste products on behalf of jurisdictions. And then it also talks about that credit concept.
Right, the credit concept is in there, but nothing about that that's a different credit than what's described in the staff report, which is, say, a vineyard buys a hundred yards of compost and assigns the credit for that purchase over to Zero Waste Sonoma, which then assigns the credit to the jurisdictions. So the credit to the jurisdictions from Zero Waste is in there, but but the whole process by which you know, sizable purchasers can get a 10% rebate in order to assign, you know, in exchange for assigning their credit over to Zero Waste isn't in the MOU anywhere. And and so I'm just, I guess that's all assumed under that B two that John just pointed out.
I think you're right, that's not worded as as well as it could have been.
Can I jump in here? That rebate program is just a concept that has been Zero Waste is going to try. It's a pilot. And the funds are coming from Zero Waste Sonoma to fund that that rebate program. So that's the MOU, it happened and it's happening. On top of that, then Zero Waste Sonoma to help sweeten the deal and help, you know, make this happen for everybody, decided that they would do a pilot program. Whether or not that will continue or not, we'll have to see how that works or doesn't.
Right, I understand that. Yeah.
So that's, that's my guess is why it's not specifically stated in the MOU is this is a separate rebate pilot program that that kind of happened. I would say, and John and Damian can correct me if I'm wrong, kind of after this whole MOA, MOU was was being worked on, because this has been being worked on for a little bit.
I don't remember when this all happened, but originally everyone was thinking, oh, we're going to have to buy all this compost and find out what we're, figure out something to do with it all.
And that's why the staff came up with this possibility of of this rebate to help, help this along. And it may, it may help, it may not.
Right. And then at some point, Cal Recycle issued a set of FAQs that indicates that you can do this procurement through a direct service provider where you could indirectly acquire organics or or compost and satisfy your obligation. And I think that's what the staff report is talking about.
Right. So I guess that is all subsumed in that B two of the, that's the method by which Zero Waste Sonoma is going to try to to accomplish the procurement in B two where they're and and it is pretty clear in that, in that paragraph that Katari gets its proportionate share of all procurement that Zero Waste Sonoma does. It doesn't have to be buyers in our town, something like that. So that's good news. Okay, that's it. Thanks.
Councilmember Sparks, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I'm just confused because I, what the reading of this is sort of conflicting with what we heard earlier, that it does have to be in Katari. So I just wonder if Mr. Barker or somebody can clarify for us is that?
I honestly try to look at what Cal Recycle has written. And I haven't seen anything about that, but Councilmember Harvey may be closer to the action than I am because she attends Zero Waste Sonoma board meetings and and maybe hears more than I do.
But the bottom line, Laura, is is it's a jurisdictional responsibility. That's sort of what it comes down to. Is that that is our responsibility. If we can meet it in other ways, then that's good, but it's really unclear how this is going to work in a county like ours where you have urban areas and you have agriculture areas. And we were very unclear on exactly, you know, where some of the more urbanized areas going to be, you know, kind of penalized because they didn't have the capability for big producers. And we didn't get a definitive answer there. And and again, I think that we are so far ahead of many of the other counties. I think that we will be able to work through this.
Just, just one quick comment that there's another FAQ response on the Cal Recycle website. The question is, do recovered organic waste products that a jurisdiction procures, Katari's a jurisdiction, need to be sourced from the jurisdictions generated organic waste produced in the jurisdiction or used within the jurisdiction? The answer is no. There's a long explanation for why, but you don't have to purchase or sell it, the material within Katari.
Well, that, John, the reason that that's in there is so, for instance, as the vice mayor pointed out earlier, we used to have a compost facility and now we just have some very small things. Most of our compost comes from, we have to purchase it from outside of the county. It is, is where we get it. And and what they're trying to say, and we had a little discussion on this too, is they want to be sure that there's not double dipping so that the county that that is actually, it's being purchased from, isn't taking that credit and the jurisdiction that is purchasing it in a different county isn't. So they want to be sure that only one jurisdiction is taking credit for it.
Vice Mayor Landman.
It's amazing how you can take a simple concept like, hey, let's responsibly reuse green waste and not waste food and somehow turn it into something so difficult, but that's the way of things. Back to the good question that Councilmember Sparks brought up about the wording on page fifty four about dwellings, multifamily residential dwellings not being required to comply with container placement requirements. You know, looking on Cal Recycle's side at their FAQ right now, it does say there's a question. Are multifamily residence complexes required to subscribe to organics collection and recycle both green waste and food waste beginning January first, twenty twenty two? Not to read the whole paragraph, but yes, they go into it. Yes, they are. Yes, they will. I'm wondering, I seem to remember that one problem we had pushing for this through our CPA, that one problem that owners and landlords of multifamily complexes of various size brought forward sometimes was when there were required requirements for placement, that often didn't work with the orientation, geography of their buildings, how their parking was configured. And I'm wondering if that flexibility with not being required with container placement requirements, where the container goes. They're not saying they don't have to have a container. They're just giving them a lot of flexibility where they place it and and labeling as well. I'm not sure about the labeling unless it's something separate from something that you just put on a can. But I'm wondering if that's what we're looking at there. But it is pretty clear that they're saying, yes, multifamilies are required to respond to this. So I can see where it is slightly more difficult for older established ones perhaps to work this into. Right now, they have limited space for a certain number of refuse cans. If you expand that, you know, by a factor of two or three with new additional cans, for some places it might be difficult. So it looks like they're just giving them some flexibility to do that. At least that's the best I can perceive. But Cal Recycle is very clear. They are required to enroll and subscribe to these services.
Councilmember Ford.
I would like to move that we approve the MOU with, sorry, it's not called Zero Waste. What's it called? Official name.
Sonoma County Waste Management.
Thank you. Sonoma County Waste Management Agency.
I would second that motion.
Need to have public comment first?
Well, first of all, I haven't said anything on this yet. And I guess I'm entitled to say something out here. So if you guys are done, can I add to this? Okay. First of all, multifamily units are required. I have it from a good source. My wife, who is an outreach specialist with recology, has to do auditing and education with multifamily units in Petaluma jurisdiction. The Katari Motor Park jurisdiction had an employee who was not able to work full time due to personal issues. So the education and outreach in our jurisdiction was not as thorough as it could have been. They have a new person coming in, and I think the new person's been introduced to members of Katari staff. Heather, I believe is her name. So she is up and running and will be working on education and outreach to the multifamily units. The other issue I was going to bring up is when you talked about the the waste coming from the retailers and diverting it from the going into the composting, maybe putting it back into the community. I think that would be hard to quantify in a document like this because, you know, you may have a retailer that has at one point a particular product or produce that is selling really well and so they don't really have any extra. And then another time it might not be. So I think that would be hard to put a number on that, to put a percentage or particulars on that. So I think that's why the, you know, I look at this particular document, the MOU really as a a living document, and it's probably going to change as we move along and and understand what works and what doesn't work and and, you know, the biggest component, I think, is going to be, as I indicated earlier, education is key. And once people realize that this is going to be required, it will have a much greater level of compliance on that. So with that, since this is an action item, I have, Councilmember Harvey, go ahead, and then I'll go around to the public.
Yeah, I just wanted to add on to what you were saying, John, because I do recall even when some of the commercial customers were having difficulties with space, as Vice Mayor pointed out. Recology's been really good at providing different sized bins so that the so that the bins could kind of fit in the existing footprint for them. So I think that they, as a franchise, have done pretty good with with helping with specific situations on some of the older units. So I just wanted to add on to that for you.
Thank you. Thank you. And with that, I will open it up for a public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. Looking to our attendees tonight, please remember to use your raise hand icon or dial star nine if you're dialing in from your telephone. Neil Hancock, go ahead.
Yes, hello. Thank you. I know this is a pretty technical subject in terms of its implementation, but I I hope that when it's that there can be some part of it that is facing the public as a sustainability or a round, a circular economy education. I mean, it's the core of of the the concept of the circular economy, that there's something that's a waste and it comes back and can then be used again. Now, I mean, I just don't know if it's very practical to get a large amount of it, but certainly at some level of having that in a, in a, in a publicly visible way, I think would be really valuable. So maybe maybe that gets worked into the documents if there's a lot of discussion later, but I I support the the idea that there's education facing the public. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Neil.
Mayor Moore, that will end public comment.
Thank you. So I'll bring it back. If there's any further discussion, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Councilmember Harvey?
I just would like to thank Damian and also the attorneys. They worked really hard on this really quickly and really did a really great job coming together on this. I know some of the things for the Waste Management Agency have taken years and they really banged this out and and put their heads together. And I want to make sure that we thank them.
Thank you so much. Not seeing any further discussion. Ms. Bridges, if we could have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Landman?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes, thank you very much. Now we'll move on to our seating managers' report. Mr. Ovid.
All right. So Mayor, members of the council, just a reminder at the outset that the COVID testing site is still operating at our St. Joseph's Park and Ride Lot across from Pete's Coffee on Old Woodward Highway. That's Tuesdays and Wednesdays, seven AM to seven PM, and appointments are strongly encouraged for that. We also, as as we all know, the Mobile Mental Health Crisis Response Team has been up and running and otherwise known as SAFE. And this team responds to people who are under the influence of drugs or alcohol and need a treatment for mental illness or who need shelter by providing counseling and transportation to an appropriate location. And also the team can do minor medical complaints that do not require an emergency room visit, and anyone can access that by Delhi nine one one in either Rona Park or Katari. It's holiday drive time, so the Rona Park Katari Rotary, the city of Katari and Rancho Adobe Fire District are teaming up again for the annual Holiday Toy Drive, which begins Monday, November twenty ninth. So any unwrapped toys, bicycles, gift cards, or other types of new presents can be donated to the Katari Police Department, Katari City Hall, or Rancho Adobe's Firehouse in Katari or Pen Grove, starting on the twenty, on the twenty ninth. And the toys will be delivered by Santa in police cars and fire trucks on Saturday, December eighteenth. So if you have any toys that you want to give to a child who maybe isn't as fortunate as as some of us, it's a great opportunity to do that every year. We also, again, won a transparency award for our accounting. I think I've mentioned this before, but just want to thank again Admin Services, Angela Porter and her team. Quarter and her team. This is the, this is the second straight award we've gotten for financial transparency. And we've also gotten three awards for our financial summary document, which is otherwise known as PAFR, and three awards for our annual budget document through third-party independent reviewers. Wayfinding, a reminder on that, that we should be seeing some signs getting installed at our creek, some of our trailheads at our creek, and also in our downtown on Old Royalwood Highway in, looks like, looks like probably December. And then a reminder again that the housing element has kicked off, so we want to hear from people. So before we've done, you know, we've done quite a bit. We did some tabling at the Halloween event. We're going to be doing some more tabling at the Shop and Stroll event on December 4th. And emails have gone out, so both in English and Spanish. So, you know, we definitely would love it if everyone, if anyone that has any input at all on the next few years of housing in Katati to participate in that process. And there's lots, and you can find all that information on our website. Our Bike and Ped Master Plan update is also going on, and you can find out how to get involved on our website. We have Zumba classes starting on Monday night. They've started on Monday nights in the Katati room from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. And first class is free if you're interested in that. Starting in December, we're going to be also offering children's ballet and dance classes in partnership with Miss Sabrina's Dance Academy. And in January, we plan to offer music together, parent and children music classes with Little Songbird, Little Songbird is the name of the organization. And then for holidays, the holidays, December 3rd, we have the in-person holiday tree lighting in La Plaza Park from 4:00 to 8:00 PM. And we're going to have horse and carriage rides, food, craft vendors, cookies, coffee, hot cocoa, crafts for the children, and of course, a visit from Santa. So we're looking for vendors right now on that or more vendors on that. As I mentioned earlier, Downtown Shop and Stroll is back again this year on the year the day after the tree lighting on Saturday, December 4th, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM in downtown Katati on Old Royalwood Highway. This event is run by our Farmers Market and also jointly with the Chamber, our Chamber of Commerce. And there's going to be lots of vendors there that have cool gifts. So if you're looking for some unique gift ideas this year and want to support local small businesses, it's a great opportunity. So I encourage you to come on down for that. And then finally, to round out the holiday event, we have Breakfast with Santa on December 11th, starting at 9:00 AM. And we're going to have Santa and his elves there making a young, a yummy breakfast of eggs, sausage, and pancakes. And we have in-person and to-go dining options, as well as in-person and to-go arts and craft options, and also an opportunity to visit with Santa and have a picture taken. So tickets are available for this event, and it typically sells out very early. So if you're interested, register at our Parks and Recs page, that's on the website. And look for other news on the headlines and also on our social media pages. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ovid. Vice Mayor Landman?
Yeah, thank you, City Manager Ovid. I just wanted to ask about the wayfinding and some new signage going up. I just wanted to confirm, make sure we had added some sort of language if we're, if we wind up using outside contractors to do any of this work, requiring the degree of plumness of any signage they install? I remember the last time we had a team that was somewhat challenged in that aspect, and it was difficult for staff to go back and and our people to go back and try and get that straightened out. So I just wanted to double check on that.
Yeah, I'm, we're definitely going to make sure that things are plumb before the contractor.
You would think you could expect that from professionals that are hired to put in signs that they would be straight, but I guess it just goes to show you have to be thorough in the contract.
Yeah, some days the world spins a little too fast, I guess, and it tilts a bit. I'm not sure. But we'll make sure that.
No Winchester mystery house angles in these this time.
Yeah, understood.
So when you were talking about straightened out, was that a double entendre, Vice Mayor Landman?
I'll never comment on that.
Thank you.
I'm not seeing any other hands up for Mr. Ovid. Thank you very much, Mr. Ovid. And now we'll move on to City Councilmember reports. Councilmember Harvey?
Well, I think we beat SB 1383 quite a lot. So I did, we did talk about that a lot at the Waste Management Agency meeting. That was the big topic there. I also attended the Santa Rosa Basin Sigma meeting, and the discussion there was around all the comments that had been received by the public. And they are in the process of incorporating those comments at this point. And we appear to be on schedule to meet the January 2022 filing of our GSP. So that is really good news. So that is all I have tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Sparks?
Thank you. I attended our joint education meeting with Rona Park and SSU on Wednesday, and we had a presentation by a group called Brighter Future, which is a partnership between Sonoma State University and local governments regarding climate change. They're trying to get students, SSU students, involved with projects with local governments. And they've been working really closely with Rona Park to do a number of projects. Engineering students will do their capstone project and actually build things for the city, and they've been doing all these neat things. So this group just kind of wanted to make an introduction to us and hopes to someday soon expand and work with Katati also. So anyway, you'll be hearing more in the next year about a brighter future presentation. We're continuing to work on scheduling meetings with HOAs for the ad hoc committee. That's really the only update I have there. And also, I am just thankful for each and every one of you since we're going into Thanksgiving, and I hope you all have a nice Thanksgiving.
Thank you. I don't see any any other hands up for any other council member reports. The only thing I have to report out is the, as many or few of you were at the mayor's and council members, and we did agree to an ad hoc committee to address the mayor's and council members' bylaws going into next year. And so that was approved there, and that was all that was on the agenda for that one. Now we can move on to public comment on non-action agenda items.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. Looking to our attendees tonight, please use your raise hand icon if you'd like to make a public comment. Mayor Moore, that will end public comment.
Thank you very much. And any information received after the agenda was posted?
Nothing further.
Thank you so much. With that, I want to wish everyone a happy and safe holiday. And hopefully we'll see you at the tree lighting on the 3rd, weather, if the weather cooperates. I've been out there when it's been pretty cold and wet. And I will adjourn our meeting at 7:06. Thank you all very much.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thanksgiving.